...the sale agreement. The one thing that stood out immediately for me was the pipe, pipe replacement. First, I was told that by the company that they would replace the pipe at twice the rate of PGW. Then I learned that while they were now, went from telling people like myself, they were doing ads on it on the air. Because it's a, it's a safety issue. I mean, everybody would like to replace all the pipe overnight if they could. But then I learned that the agreement, which everybody admits is somewhere around that thick, the sale agreement, does not mention pipe replacement as a requirement to accelerate anything. It just doesn't mention it at all. And that really struck me because this is something that was sort of the prominent point that was mentioned to me up front, and now it's all over the news. And the, and the ad wires. I never once heard the DISC program involved in any of the discussions, analysis, you know, the reports I was reading. As to why the company would be so interested in this, I just never heard of the program. It was in the Inquirer story a few weekends ago, and it talked about a pre-approved, and that's why I'm going to ask you exactly what it is. I really want to know what this is. A pre-approved rate increase to all utilities, not just Philadelphia, for replacing old pipe or pipe period, because you're going to replace the old pipe anyway. And that for an investor-owned company, that would be very attractive for return on investment because there's a pre-approved rate increase. It's how I was described as, as I read it. Now, what I still didn't get from your answers to Councilman Nielsen about pipe replacement, you mentioned DISC. It's the first time I've heard it mentioned publicly by anybody. Is, are they, even what they're, they contemplated in their promotional materials, the company, UIL, were they given accurate numbers in terms of the years that you're currently replacing it? I think I heard, first I heard 70 versus 35 they were going to do.
The, the years that have been discussed are embedded in our long-term infrastructure plan that was filed with the Public Utility Commission. That was a prerequisite to getting approval to implement the DISC mechanism. And that's the facility that we've used to expand from 18 miles up to, this year we did 28. So we actually did 10 more miles of pipe, and we used $22 million from the customers, a little less than 22 million. The DISC mechanism for a municipal is very, recognizes that we are fragile financially. So we get a pay-as-you-go DISC. So whatever we spend in that year, we get recovery. Now, our 5% DISC, which is 5% of our non-fuel revenues, that's the 22 million. It's about 22 and a half million, which is 5% of our non-fuel revenues. That's the largest in the state. I believe the next largest is Peoples at about 1.4% of their non-fuel. So, so we're using this DISC to a pretty great degree, and the impact on the customers is a $22 million rate increase. That's what happens when we use the DISC. But the advantage is we've removed 10 miles of additional cast iron pipe. And cast iron pipe, state-of-the-art when it was installed, but it's the hand we're dealt, and we have to, we have to get it out of the ground. What UIL has said is that they would expedite that process from an 88-year process to a 44-year process. Beyond that, I don't have specifics.
And is that tied into DISC program from a, from a private company's standpoint as the attraction would be return on investment?
I would imagine, I would imagine that, I mean, I would imagine that they would want to maintain the 5% DISC that we have, which is, you know, about 10 miles of pipe right now. But it's, the, the real issue is just $22 million. If their overall spend was 100, they'd have 22 million recovered through the DISC. Now, unlike a municipal, they only get to recover 10% of their investment on an annual basis. So they only get that 2.2 that I was explaining to, to, to Councilman Nielsen. And, you know, when they do another 22 million the next year, they get to recover 10% on that. So the 10% doesn't stop, it keeps overlapping. And that's why at some point, with interest and everything else, it is going to cross over the pay-as-you-go that PGW has. But nevertheless, for many years, you're going to have customers paying that extra 22 million. That's the advantage that I believe UIL was trying to describe. In fact, they are an investor-owned model, and they can do it differently.
Okay. Would, and I'm, everybody gets a lease too. I mean, I'm still on the same subject, Mr. Chairman. The DISC program then is the reason that they could do twice, twice as fast?
No, they would have to invest their own capital to go to that level.
Okay. And so, simply put, you're already ahead of what's, on public record, your schedule based on when you applied for the DISC?
No, we actually incorporated that, that 22 million in the 88 year.
Oh, okay.
That was down from about 125 years.
Okay.
So once we threw in the extra, yeah, we've reduced it. And of course, we would look for ways to reduce it even further in the future, but we're still talking about multiple, multiple decades before we're able to. Now, now PICO either announced or will announce they're, they're doing their program in 20 years.
Right.
So, you know, we realize that there's pressure by virtue of what other utilities have done that surround PGW, but we have no rate headroom to continue to throw these surcharges on customers. We need some of that rate headroom to do some of the things that Council President and I were talking about, like combined heat and power, and incentivizing these. So if we use every bit of headroom that we have, we already have the highest non-fuel rates in the state. So we're, we're, we're in a little bit of a tough quandary there.
There also is, I understand, a limit, just practically speaking. If you go into a neighborhood, you can't say, well, boy, we can replace all this pipe around here, and be very efficient to do it because it'll be in the neighborhood. You'd shut neighborhoods down, you'd shut businesses down. So it, it isn't quite as easy as it first sounds to just accelerate your pipe. Going from 18 to 28 is a pretty high.
Right. Well, we went from 18 to 28, and the, the small diameter portion of that extra 10 miles, we did in the same manner we did the first 18. We prioritize it as the, the greatest risk. When you take the number from, say, 28 to 50, you then start have to, you have to consider commerce in the city of Philadelphia. So I'm sure what we would recommend to whatever investor-owned company were to purchase PGW, we'd recommend a strategy that would replace cast iron in various areas of the city so that we wouldn't overly affect commerce just in the Old City, Bella Vista, you know, you know, that area, you know, in that area, Society Hill, and so forth, Queen Village. They're the areas where we have a lot of old pipe.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, between you and your answer, and my colleague David O., you answered a question I would have had. So I'll shift to the retrofitting of older industrial facilities to modernize them to create an attraction. A good example for me in the 4th District would be the old Acme Bakery, where that bakery was about, I'm gonna say, 17 acres, and probably one of the larger costs other than ingredients to the bread and labor would be energy. How would the private sector be able to retrofit a industrial complex like that to make it more energy-efficient and more modern? And why could the private sector do it better than the way we are configured now?
Yeah. I can only give you examples of what I've seen in the private sector. And many private sector companies set up multiple corporations to do different things. If you look at UGI, for instance, they're not only a gas distribution company, but they're all, you know, aside from their propane business, let's just stay local or limited to their gas business. They do, they have the Horizon Services, which are a subsidiary of theirs. So they have a separate business that does basically parts and labor. They have a separate business that sells natural gas. They have a separate business that does pre-engineering and engineering for large installations. In a lot of cases, companies, I remember Constellation Energy, they had the ability to design, build, and finance large retrofits like the ones you're describing. So if you're a large entity with, with, you know, an investor-owned operation, you're only going to do so much business within the utility space, and then you're going to set up these separate corporations that will allow you to invest capital and get a return. And as we all know, a utility has a regulated return, whereas when you get in the unregulated world and you're willing to take on more risk, you're going to get whatever, you know, risk reward. Right? So I think that's where an investor-owned entity starts to look for opportunity. You know, there's, there's a significant undertaking in Philadelphia just to double our cast iron man replacement. That will be a huge undertaking for whatever private entity comes in here, and, and they will earn a return on that, and appropriately so. From there, they're going to have to look at other opportunities and decide whether they're going to delve into these other businesses. But obviously, we think that, that Phil-, the Philadelphia marketplace is ripe for combined heat and power. We think it's ripe for LNG, and we think it's ripe for natural gas vehicles. So we, we hope to encourage anyone who would come in here to consider that.
So if it hasn't been said already, I want to put it on the record, that we probably would not be here but for the efficiency of your management team, you and your leadership over the stewardship of, of our asset. And I want to thank you publicly, although we're debating, you know, where we should be on this thing, but obviously, there would be no debate if it wasn't operating efficiently. And I want to thank you publicly.
Well, that, that thank you goes to the, the hard-working employees, and I really appreciate that because, as Keith said, if we hadn't developed this partnership with the union, we wouldn't have been able to do the things we did. And we certainly have a very strong group of non-union folks that are really dedicated to the company. And quite frankly, we have a good succession plan for the future. And, you know, my mantra has always been, don't leave the cupboard bare. So the next person that does your job better be do-, better at doing it than you are. So that's kind of the mantra at PGW.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. No further questions?
Craig, I want to say thank you very much for your leadership of PGW. It's been a pleasure working with you through the years, and you've done a great job of turning the company around, and we appreciate your leadership, and we also appreciate the support of the unions in working with you. And so the commission has certainly tried to be cooperative in all matters dealing with PGW. So thank you very much.
And Madam Chairwoman, your leadership on the Gas Commission has supported the gas works for all these many years, and, and we very much appreciate that, and the fine staff.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Our next group.
Councilman, we have, PGW is not quite finished.
Make a brief statement. I'm David Seltzer, Chair of the.
Okay, please. Because we have about six other people, so we want everybody to try to be careful.
This is about a three-minute statement, very brief. Many of the points have been made already, and people on council look pretty decothermed out, so I'll be very succinct. I've been the Chair of the PFMC for the last six and a half years. As you know, it's a nonprofit corporation that manages and operates PGW. Our fiduciary duty is to achieve the mission of PGW, safe, reliable service and financial stability. And so briefly, from a board member perspective, what steps could be taken so that PGW can both assist in and benefit from Philadelphia as an energy hub? And this is important, not just for the financial health of the company, but also for our nearly half a million residential customers. As Craig was saying, we have to grow the business. We have the highest rates in the state, perhaps the country. The only way to whittle that down is to expand our customer base, particularly industrial and institutional. And gas is of, the gas business is a truly volatile business, and we, in our current status as a municipal utility, lack the financial capacity and the risk tolerance to really optimize, make the most of the energy hub opportunities. So I'm not here to talk about the merits or lack of merits of sale. I just want to make two points in response to earlier observations. First, if a different platform were used, such as an investor-owned utility, it would reduce financial risk to the city general fund. It was only a dozen years ago or so that we needed that emergency loan from the general fund to buy PGW over, and there could be a trough again. We're in sort of a, an upward cycle. The other point I wanted to react to is, I don't understand why it's imperative that the gas service be operated by a municipal, municipal utility. I understand the perspective of Keith and the terrific work he's done at Local 686, wanting to keep the current arrangement in place, but our peer cities, Boston, Chicago, New York, Pittsburgh, Baltimore, Washington, they all have union employees with investor-owned utilities taking care of low-income families with assistance programs, maintaining reasonable labor relations. I don't know why it's an imperative that Philadelphia be the outlier and be the only municipal system. So I think in terms of optimizing energy hub potential, we really need to eliminate the institutional impediments in our legal and governance framework. And it's been pointed out, as a municipal utility, we're subject to the state constitution, other state statutes, city charter ordinance, and so forth. We really need to streamline our governance, and this was pointed out in the Energizing Our Future brochure that you distributed, Item 7, about simplifying and rationalizing the structure. And I'll admit that PFMC, we're part of the problem. We're one of the hoops Craig has to jump through. Gets approvals from PFMC, the Philadelphia Gas Commission, the City Finance Director, the City Council, other matters for the PUC. That is not a best practices for trying to be nimble and take advantage of the business opportunities that an energy hub might offer. My final observation, I heard quite a few comments and questions today about, well, what about the asset purchase agreement and UIL this, UIL that? I think many of those questions could be resolved if there were, in fact, a hearing, and you invited UIL to give their perspective on it and get a definitive answer to some of the very good questions you asked. So thank you for your patience in allowing me to speak briefly.
Mr. Seltzer, I'm going to recognize Councilman Tascow, but just let you know, anybody could have come here today and spoken. I'll just leave it at that. Councilman Tascow?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to belabor the point. We're not the only municipal utility. There are two others in the state of Pennsylvania. And just because other cities have many, investor-owned, doesn't mean that we have to be that way. We just have to figure out how the best way to work and develop other alternatives of, of doing it without a sale.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next witnesses, and I ask everybody to try to, because we still have a few more who want to speak, to try to be as brief as possible. Madeline Chikumba, and anyone else here from North of Washington Avenue Coalition? And next is Robert Ballinger and Phil Lord. Okay, so if you get ready, if you're still with us. Yeah, why don't you just come up, then we can try to move as quickly as possible? Okay, Ms. Chikumba, go ahead. Just identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Madeline Chikumba. I'm representing North of Washington Avenue Coalition.
Maybe a little closer microphone. And if I could ask everybody, please, your voice is carrying here, so it's hard to hear sometimes.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah, please.
Okay. My other individuals, they left because they had grandparents and had to pick up grandkids.
Okay.
So that's why they're not here. We are here to have some PGW. A few months ago, we presented to President Clark over 3,000 signatures, people of Philadelphia opposing the sale of PGW. More than 1,000 of those signatures were handwritten signatures from people who wrote their name down, and were not gotten over the internet. That's how people in Philadelphia felt about the sale of PGW. They did not want it sold. We wish to commend City Council for putting citizens' interests first by not selling PGW and keeping it as a public utility. The sale of PGW would have left the citizens of this city with higher gas rates, lower loss of jobs, less oversight of spending and safety issues, and the reduction or elimination of special programs for seniors, low, and moderate-income people in the city. We wish to acknowledge the fact that PGW has set up various programs to help the low and moderate-income people and the seniors in this city. Recently, PGW has created a program called Energy Cents, Community Outreach and Education Program, to help people reduce their gas bill by showing them ways to reduce their consumption of fossil fuels. Although the program has good features, it will not accomplish its goals unless some modifications are made. The program provides for incentives to those who have money, more so than it does to those who don't. They offer construction grants of $750 to people who install energy-efficient natural gas equipment during new home construction or do gut rehabilitation projects. Most of these people already have money and probably are well-aware of the high-efficiency energy products that are available. The problem with this program is that the people who need the energy programs are not going to get much help. Why? Because according to the program, the individuals have to pay, there's a $500 fee, which they have reduced to $150, for them to have a consultant come out and tell them where they need to do energy efficiency. People can't afford $150. How are you going to pay $150 for somebody to come out, how to make your home home efficient, when you can't even pay the gas bill? It's my suggestion that somehow PGW provide or make available to grants or make some kind of, something available to these people to make themselves accessible to this program. And then after they have the consultation, and they find out they need maybe $1,000 or $2,000 worth of work done, some kind of grant or low-cost financing to help them make those repairs. By helping them do this, they can naturally reduce the amount of gas that they are using. Without that taking place, these people will not be able to fully function into this program. We suggest that, since they are giving outright grants for new construction, wouldn't it be more practical to offer it to low and moderate income so they can implement changes? Making homes more efficient will reduce the subsidy of $75 million a year that PGW routinely provides to low and moderate and senior citizens, because this will make their home more energy-efficient, and the program will end up paying for itself. Currently, I'm also going to finish up by just saying this. I am thinking towards the future. We must now begin to think outside the box. I'm thinking about 2050. I won't be here, but my grandkids will be. I'm not a fossil fuel person. I don't support it because of the impact it has upon the environment. Has a tremendous impact, causing asthma, various illnesses, and so forth. The city must now begin to think about moving away from fossil fuel. I am suggesting that the city use some of this money to conduct some kind of study that will show us how we can move from fossil fuel to more renewable energy. That's right, renewable energy. Energy that doesn't pollute, any that doesn't destroy our water systems, our air, the food we eat. Use some of that money now for the future. Look to the future. Look to 2050, not to 2014, 2015, or 2016. Look to 2050. Do it for our grandkids and the future generations that we won't be here to see, because we got to get off of fossil fuel and other fuels, burning fuels. So I ask you to do that now. Do a study.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chikumba. I appreciate it. Whoever, like, Mr. Ballinger, Mr. Lord, whoever would like to go next.
First, unless you want to? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name's Robert Ballinger. I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services, where I specialize in utility matters. One of my primary responsibilities is serving as lead counsel in CLS's role as public advocate. In that capacity, I represent all the residential customers in PGW's annual operating and capital budget proceedings before the Philadelphia Gas Commission. I also represent low-income customers and organizations that assist them to try to ensure that Philadelphia families have access to the necessary resources to continue their service. Access to affordable, efficient, and safe utility service is central to public health. Without it, disastrous consequences, such as the loss of housing or removal of children from a family home, can and do occur. I'd like to start by responding to something I heard on the radio last week. This isn't covered in the, in the testimony I filed. On Friday, Philadelphia Mayor Michael Nutter questioned why the city of Philadelphia should own and operate a gas utility. I did a little survey of some of the reasons why municipalities espouse, you know, city ownership of their utilities, and there are lots of reasons. The American Public Gas Association reports that there are approximately 1,000 public gas systems in the United States. Some communities have recently engaged in efforts to gain ownership of utilities that serve them, including Minneapolis and Boulder, both of which I believe were electric utilities, but nonetheless, energy utilities. So here are some of the basic reasons that I gleaned from the literature that was available. These are things municipalities point to in support of municipal ownership. A utility owned by the city it serves exists to provide a public service to the residents and businesses of the city. Service rather than profit is the utility's mission. Second, local regulation can be more responsive and accessible than regulation outside of a city. Third, a municipal utility is operated in the public interest for the benefit of residents and businesses of the city, and not for the benefit of stockholders who live many miles away and may have no other ties to the community. In private ownership, there is a tension between the interests of ratepayers and the interests of stockholders. Creating a sound local economy through local ownership means energy dollars stay in the community. A utility can serve as an engine for economic development. Operating decisions are vetted locally at open public meetings, where the utility is able to respond directly to the community's needs, build on its strength, and reflect its values. Those were some of the common themes that I observed, and perhaps those will be useful to keep in mind in considering PGW's future. Now I would like to briefly go over some of the points in my testimony. PGW exists to serve the needs of its customers, to provide affordable, safe, and efficient utility service. In return, PGW counts on and is beholden to the primarily residential customer population, which has funded its construction and operations for more than a century. As a result, as public advocate, CLS seeks to ensure that the future of PGW is mapped out with a clear directive to promote the long-term best interests of PGW's residential customers, who, as, as Mr. White pointed out, are, are truly the stockholders here. These hearings are not necessarily focused on the merits of the proposed sale of PGW, but I think it's appropriate to consider some of the risks those terms presented, which we identified and which have been now confirmed by City Council's independent experts, Concentric Energy Advisors. In order that we properly plan for the future, I think we need to be aware of the kinds of risks that, that could occur in the future if we don't plan carefully. First, I'll address some low-income concerns, then some concerns relating to all customers, and then comment on the future direction of PGW and some of the main replacement efforts. For low-income issues, and I think this is nothing that council is not aware of at this point, but the, the proposed sales terms provided no assurance or commitment to continue the design features of PGW's core low-income program, features which have made it the strongest and most efficient of its kind in Pennsylvania. There was no commitment in the sale terms to the low-income weatherization program or hardship program, and both of those programs help PGW's low-income customers. The primary program is costly, and that's because Philadelphia has a large percentage of people in need, and a large amount of lower-income housing stock lacks weatherization and is in need of repair. PGW's basic low-income program, its core program, CRP, Customer Responsibility Program, seeks to ensure that even in those challenging circumstances, low-income customers can heat their homes. It's the only program in Pennsylvania that, subject to a minimum bill requirement, charges customers a fixed percentage of household income without usage or cost limitation. It's also the only program under PUC regulation that is funded by all customers, residential, commercial, and industrial. All other utilities recover the costs directly from residential's only. If that cost-sharing feature were to change, and those costs were to be shifted to residential customers, those customers would face customers, those customers would face approximately $20 million in additional rates per year. In considering the future of PGW, the city should continue to guard against a reduction of benefits to low-income customers, because the result is that families cannot afford service, and PGW loses customers. Neither of those outcomes is positive. In addition, the city should bear in mind that potential changes to program design can impact residential customers by shifting costs directly or indirectly. There's one very clear way CRP program costs can be reduced without raising the cost to non-low-income families, or to low-income families for that matter, and that's by assisting and incentivizing weatherization. The cost of low-income programs depends on what families need to heat their homes. If we reduce need, we can reduce cost, and weatherization is one of the key components Concentric has identified. There's an outstanding resolution the city council passed last year that perhaps we should revisit about opportunities for innovative funding of strategies to repair and maintain low-income housing. As you're aware, the terms of the proposed sale would have transferred PGW's liens to a private company with no contractual limitation on enforcement. As city council recognized, a change in lien policy could set the stage for a crisis among residential customers who cannot afford and may not even be responsible for those obligations. Finally, there was a provision in the sale document aimed at continuing the senior discount. That provision did not address the legal reality that PGW is only permitted to have that program by a special statute that only applies to a city-owned utility. So turning to some of the issues that affect all residential customers.
Yeah, Ms. Ballinger, if I could ask you to try to wrap it up quickly.
Working on it, yes.
Thank you. Please.
The media and some of the proponents of the sale have latched on to and perhaps placed undue focus on the short-term potential that rates could go down, and Concentric says that rates could go down. It doesn't say they would, and there's no guarantee of that. But Concentric emphasizes that over the long term, private ownership would likely ensure higher annual and cumulative costs to PGW's customers. Council's correct to focus on the long-term future of PGW. I won't go into what Concentric explains thoroughly, but it is true, and I think it's been spoken about already, that at some point, the investment returns under a private ownership model cause customers to pay more for main replacement efforts than they would under the current model. Much of the discussion has focused on replacement of cast-iron mains, and Mr. White spoke about that program and gave you all the details. I recognize city council suggested that PGW could increase the disk charge, the distribution system improvement charge, further to increase the accelerated replacement. I believe that idea must be more fully explored, and there is a real issue about whether acceleration is cost-beneficial to PGW's customers. Even if it is, there may be opportunities to avoid higher costs, and Concentric has analyzed several opportunities available to PGW which can increase net revenues, stimulate economic development, and position PGW for the future benefit of the customers it serves. PGW management and stakeholders should focus on those opportunities, and I know Mr. White has said that PGW is focused on it. But basic fairness to customers requires that we assess those options for additional net revenues before we pass on higher rates to customers. The final point I want to make is that any expansion in business of PGW must confer a benefit on customers. There's one thing I think everyone realizes is that this entity has forced and required customers to pay a lot over the years, and we need to be mindful that if we're able to produce future benefits from PGW, that those benefits flow to the customers. We should prioritize efforts in those directions and create reasonable cost-beneficial proposals for gas commission consideration. It will take more than just PGW and the gas commission. The city must view PGW as a full-fledged partner capable of contributing to efforts which benefit the city and PGW's customers. Private partnerships must guarantee a return to PGW's customers. Incentives to new businesses, developments, commercial or residential or otherwise must guarantee a meaningful return to PGW's residential customers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you for hanging in there. I know it's getting late. Sorry, I had a lot of ground to cover.
No, I understand, and I appreciate you waiting that long. It's been a long day. Ms. Lord, before you go, one second. Do you have? Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Greenly, another councilperson here. My name is Phil Lord. I'm the executive director of TURN, TURN along with TAG, as you probably know, has been around servicing and advocating for tenants for the last 40 years. We have classes every day. We see a couple thousand tenants a year or more than that, and in that process, we learn about their problems, and that includes utility problems. So we're here just to encourage you to look at the state of the consumer, as you look at this Energy Hub concept and the other things that you're working on. Quickly, a couple of the points are that a third of the consumers in Philadelphia are below the federal poverty level, and so they're very much in need of affordability in terms of bills. A third, over a third, I may say a quarter, over a third of PGW's residential customers are in fact low-income. So that makes affordability a key issue. In addition to that, there's been a lot of terminations. PGW may have the highest rates, but it also has the highest termination rates, and it also has the most number of customers who are entering the winter times without heat. That's a serious problem. Of course, it causes homelessness. It causes suffering, health problems. That has to be a trend that needs to be reversed. We talked about weatherization already, and I don't want to get into that again, but rubs is an issue that's been on the table for a while. There are a lot of landlords in the city who have one PGW meter and several tenants. We want to make sure those tenants have access to the kind of beneficial programs for paying bills that other tenants have, make sure that their bills are accurate, make sure that their bills are fair and that they're calculated based on rational processes other than just a number of people in an apartment. So rubs is an issue you have to keep in mind as we go forward. I think that's about it. I think really the major concern is simply that part of the development strategy includes consumers, and that we make sure that consumers are able to do even a better job on whatever program you go forward with.
Always have to think about the customers, right?
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you both very much. Thank you for all the work you do for our communities.
Thanks.
Now, is there someone else here who wants to testify? Sir?
I'm Alex DeBosse.
Okay, you can't, you've got to wait till you get to the microphone, because the stenographer can't hear you. Okay, thank you. Just identify yourself.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm Alex DeBosse here, Senior Vice President with UIL Holding, and I will not make us go any later into the evening than we need to, but I thought it'd be helpful if I just addressed a few things that came up today.
Okay, if I could just interrupt you for a second, just for the record, so we don't get criticized on this. You had not asked to testify earlier today, right?
Not earlier.
You were not on the list. Okay, all right. I don't want to be criticized for having you last.
Is it okay that I?
No, go. No, go. I just want to get that on the record, so we're not, somebody doesn't say we kept UIL to last.
And again, I don't want to push the generosity, but our preference clearly is to have a hearing with more of our experts, more of our people, to get into greater detail about the deal that we had put on the table. As to issues that were brought up today, UIL does stand ready to modify the arrangement, to work with council members, to hear the concerns, and how we can make it better, if that's possible. A few issues we've already worked on is the EOP. We've committed, despite the fact we're not taking any public money and it's not required to, we will put the EOP in at the time council considers, if council considers, the sale of PGW. As far as LNG goes, we intend to have the business case that everybody talked about, but at this point, operate it as part of the regulated part of our company, and share any benefits with our ratepayers under the orders of the State Commission. So this will not be a profit that goes into our pocket. And then going back to the first slide that was put up by the Concentric folks, we do still believe that we can operate PGW at lower costs than it currently is by PGW, not just, not to say that we're better people or they're not doing things right, but just that we believe that, and again, some of the ideas are out there that we came in with, that we think that we can operate it at a lower cost. So again, just very briefly, we've gone over the highlights of the deal, the transaction we believe can cut in half the time to replace the pipe. We think that this will unleash unbelievable economic activity, not just in the Philadelphia Energy Hub, but within Philadelphia with addition to PGW employees and also to crews. We will use our access to capital markets, to all of the five or six things that Concentric put up there, that PGW admittedly has to come to you and ask for money for, and we will support to the extent that makes this council comfortable, the continuation of all the programs for Philadelphia heating customers that are facing economic hardships or on the senior programs or enter on fixed incomes. And there are ways that we may be able to change the arrangement that if what comes out of the obligation put on us by the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission is not suitable to this council, then the deal doesn't go through. That's one idea that we're trying to think through. And then we do believe that the most important asset at PGW are the employees, Keith and his people, and Craig, who's, we agree, has done a great job. There's been some conversation about the employee numbers, the no layoff for three years, that's what was in the pro forma of the RFP, so we agreed to it. That's not set in stone. We can do that. We can change that. The minimum number of 1,350 employees, we were the highest bidder on that. We accepted the highest obligation to keep that. If that's something we want to talk about, and again, that's also for three years. We also have, since this time and again, and I'm sorry Keith and the attorney aren't here, but we will talk about ways that we can make this binding, more binding, and maybe part of it is that if it isn't to council approval at the end, that walk away, but we have agreed to grandfather everybody in who's on the current pension plan. We have agreed that anyone who's healthcare on 1/1/2015, if they agree to stay on, so there's not this mass exodus, that whatever happens in the future, they'll be held harmless, and they can still have that. We have agreed to a one-year extension of the current 686 contract to give everybody a little breathing room. So those are the kind of things as part of an omnibus, all-inclusive settlement to this that we'd look at. And again, just some of the other high points of the deal, we will freeze the base rates through 2017. We will lower the disk charge for customers from the current identical spending levels. So for every $22 million we spend, we get more pipe than the $22 million, because we can leverage the capital over the long-term use of the life of the asset. We will maintain the existing six walk-in customer service centers, maintain all existing call centers, try to work with everybody to increase the sourcing of Marcella Shell Natural Gas. Currently, in Connecticut, with some of the same people that are in Pennsylvania, we get 75% of our gas from the Marcella Shell. There will be no new use of municipal liens or foreclosures on liens on owner-occupied homes. We will increase the employment and supplier diversity efforts, that I know is important to many members. We will try to find new job pipelines to PGW employment, utilizing some of the great local institutions that have been mentioned as opportunities for good jobs for young Philadelphians. Increase economic development initiatives at PGW. Establish a Philadelphia charitable foundation. Establish a local advisory board that, while it will not replicate the authority that council has over PGW now, we can talk about oversight that you can have over our ongoing operations and some input into that. Adding an additional corporate headquarters, a dual headquarters in Philadelphia, and adding a member from the Philadelphia community to our corporate board. And as I said, as far as the Economic Opportunity Plan, we have hired a consultant, probably known to some of you, Pat Coulter, former head of the Urban League, and some of the, we are ready to share it with any, we are ready to share a draft with any member, and would welcome suggestions, and some of the ideas that we have is to transparently measure and monitor our progress towards the items identified in the Economic Opportunity Plan. In addition to ensuring that our employees and suppliers represent the diversity of Philadelphia, we would also strive to create education partnerships, create job training programs, implement a wider worker reentry program, create an infrastructure reutilization program, establish urban renewal initiatives, focus charitable contributions on those areas of importance to all city stakeholders, including this body, and undertake recruitment outreach to those groups underrepresented in the energy industry. And so I am sorry at this late date to take up the time, and like I said, I hope that we can talk about this further, because I do understand it's a compromise.
I understand, and some members have questions. Let me just ask one real basic one.
Yes, sir.
You talk about some of the things you would do. We have been told many, many times over that this ordinance, this plan was an up or down vote. It couldn't be amended. Now, we're starting to hear different things, and I'm trying to understand that.
I will tell you, UIL will speak with anybody in any form if it would help move this process forward.
It's not, with all due respect, that's not quite the same thing. We were told that either we approved this contract that was sent to us exactly, or not. Is that?
That's not my understanding.
That's not your understanding? My understanding, that's in the agreement, but okay, I won't belabor that, okay? Because I know some other council members, and it's late at night. Councilman Nielsen, then Jones, then Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming and testifying today. Couple of things, early testimony, the modified agreement, you already just talked about that. We've heard testimony today that you refused to work with, meet with the workforce and the employees, that you failed to meet with them, your company failed to meet with them through this whole process. Is that a true statement?
I would not view it as a true statement. We signed the agreement on March 2nd at approximately 12:20 in the afternoon. We met with Keith and the attorney at approximately 4 o'clock on March 2nd that afternoon.
How about in between, like now?
The very next day, we had an all-hands meeting with all the employees at PGW. We've had sporadic meetings with 686. Candidly, and maybe because it's late and my guard's down, I was wondering why they were going so slow, but if the issue really is that privatization can't be negotiated, then there's really not much we can do. I mean, we can tell them what we can offer them, we can tell them what we offer the six unions we currently have.
All right, and that's something I want to talk to you about, because you put a lot of promises on your records. Do you have that, your testimony, written down?
I don't have testimony, because I did not know that I'd be.
No problem, no trouble. It's on the record, we'll get it. But there's a lot of stuff that, you talked about grandfathering healthcare, harmless, I mean, the report we got from Concentric's mentioned none of that was in there.
And it was probably a timing issue, probably at the time Concentric did that. These are since then.
All right, so we continue to talk, and as far as you're concerned, the legislation that was put forth, or that the mayor wants us to put forth, as the councilman indicated, up or down vote, that can be amended prior to being on this council floor?
Okay. I am clearly not an expert on the procedures of this body.
But we'd have to amend it.
Okay, but my understanding is there is no legislation in front of the body right now.
There is not.
So that legislation can be introduced.
That's technical. We all know it's coming, all right?
But legislation could be introduced, that for instance.
With the agreement, if that agreement in place that has to be introduced with a piece of legislation, is that agreement there amendable?
My understanding is that it can. My understanding is that it can be changed.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
And, and we're talking.
Thank you.
And if you have suggestions on any idea that a change might help us.
The dialogue's important, and I think it's very important that here you are today and you weren't on the list and you sat and hung in, that's why, since I heard you. We're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jones?
What I want to say to you and to UIL is that whatever way this turns out, we want you to know, and it's not probably consolation at this point, is that we appreciate the fact that you considered Philadelphia. And there's been a lot of back and forth about how we view your bid to come into Philadelphia and that this body in particular didn't want to give you proper consideration. Want you to know that all of us, and I can say it for the people who are here and some of the people who aren't here, is that we took you seriously. We take you seriously. We appreciate the fact that you're looking at our asset and don't want to send a signal to you or anyone in the private sector that we are not open for business consideration and that we are, we are closed-minded to different options and opportunities. What we, what we do want to say to you is, is, as evidenced by the fact that it's, what, 7:30 and we're still here, is that we take this seriously. You waited, and we appreciate you waiting and, and hearing out your testimony, and that we are looking at possibilities. But we care about, at the end of the day, as a great councilperson said, "To act in haste, you will repent in your leisure." And as a freshman, I took that seriously. So we're deliberating and we're looking at what, what our options are as a municipality as to our asset, because once you do it, you can't call it back. You can't say, "Ooh, I need a do-over." So if, in any way, to you personally or to your investors or stakeholders or stockholders, this is not our intention. And I wanted to say that to you publicly. And we appreciate you looking at us, and we, we take our jobs very seriously about what is in the best interest of taxpayers and ratepayers as well. I say that as a councilperson, I say that as a gas commission, all right? On the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Councilman Squiller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I want to reiterate, although colleagues have thanked you for being here and testifying and spending a long day listening to everybody talk. But my question is, and everybody asked about the amendable process, the extension of the contract, everything's willing to, you're willing to look at that and negotiate it. The debate is whether that could really be done or not, but just the infrastructure part. To redo it in half the time, which means we'd have to do approximately 50 miles a year, and would that be done, because we, we heard earlier where the older pipes are, mainly in the, in an area that's pretty heavily concentrated and full of density. So if you're doing it in half the time, would you have to open up more of that street all at the same time, correct?
Hopefully, we wouldn't have to. The first thing we do would be with existing PGW management and the institutional knowledge, hire an engineering firm, which I think was the recommendation of Concentric, to go out and to really get a good plan that takes into account the interruption of commerce and to getting this done. The, but we are committed to putting the money behind this to get this done in half the time. And, you know, as you've heard people say, that is the general thought in the industry right now, to get the older pipe out of the ground as soon as you can.
So I guess it depends, as that goes forward, you may be able to do 50 one-year, 30 the next, depending on everything that goes on, because once you hit, the majority of the pipe is all in one area of the old pipe, then you're going to have to go do some other areas at that time also to try to keep up with that.
That's what we found in the areas, the gas companies we've taken over in New England, we've also cut in half basically the time, and it was exactly, we found exactly the same thing, that you just can't go in and shut down a four-block area.
Right.
Because it's convenient to do something.
And, and the commitment is also would be added into the contract, or is that something that you would agree to?
My, again, my understanding is that that is a, something that will get filed, the way PGW's is now with the Public Utility Commission, the way their 88-year is filed now, ours, ours half would be. And again, I don't know whether it's something that we can make contingent on you all getting a final look at it and being the last arbiters of it.
Don't seem like we know that either, so.
Yeah, we're all, we're all just trying, you know, we're trying to think of ways to give you, to give you a comfort level, because I do understand that once, you know, you're feeling that once it goes, it goes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Councilman O?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I do appreciate you being here and, and everything, and for me personally, I'd love to have a continuing discussion. I will state clearly, without a doubt, that the deal was presented and negotiated by the administration, and within those constraints, they set the parameters. It comes to this body for a vote yes or no as an approval, not as an opportunity to renegotiate, set new standards, do anything else. And so it was clearly a yes or no vote, up or down, period. And that was the problem in having these discussions, is that there was some willingness, or a lot of willingness, it appeared, on the part of UIL to say, "No, we could do this, we could do that." But as far as I understood and everybody in this body, and when we dealt with UIL, the fact that they were willing to say, "We could do this or we could do that," none of us could do it under the current situation. I'm not sure how we get around that unless, you know, there's a, a new, you know, a process by the administration or a interpretation by the city solicitor that there's some type of latitude. The next thing that occurred is that some of the things that you were saying would sound great, and I have heard, are not in the contract. And how do we put them in the contract? Because, you know, it's wonderful that you're saying it, I've heard it before, but it has to be in the contract.
And again, I'm not sure it has to be in the contract. I'm not sure you can't introduce an ordinance that says this is required, that you are required to put, which we intend to do anyway, EOP in at the same time, that you are required to make sure that the PUC accepts your plans for the people facing economic hardship and the.
I'm willing to be as flexible as it takes to get this done, but what I'm saying is the legal parameters are probably established by the mayor's office and the city solicitor. We're like a legislative body, we're not going to create laws to put clauses in a contract, but if you can be flexible and present something, I think the proposal would be good. But I don't want to be fanciful or unrealistic that we're going to like start writing ordinances to fill in the blank spots of a contract. You know, the contract, as far as I understand, and I'm not the city solicitor, is that the mayor has those powers under the charter. He sets the parameters. We simply can approve or, you know, or vote yes or no on the specifics of the terms and conditions of the bill. And so somehow, if you can put that into a proposal and some other things, and then I'll say the other thing that I've been curious about is, you know, and I still don't understand, and I have met with UIL on a number of occasions, is if you have a long-term commitment to investing in the development of natural gas and, and, and getting those capital markets and doing all those things, are you, UIL going to put that in a long-term contract? As opposed to a three-year contract?
You mean as far as the no layoffs or as far as the?
In a strategic plan, a long-term plan, an investment plan, commitments to, you know, raising funds, you know?
I think, I think we can come up with something for you. I obviously don't have it with me, and it wouldn't come out of my shop. But again, in a larger hearing, I think that we could come up with what a 10-year capital spend plan would, would look like under a UIL.
Okay, so, so I thank you. I will say that I'm only asking questions and obviously have no authority other than just to ask questions.
I appreciate your response.
But I appreciate the response. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. For, we adjourn. Councilman, Councilman Tasco, you wanted to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bossier. Unfortunately, you find yourself in a position where you probably didn't understand the operations of city council and city government. The mayor made a decision that he wanted to sell PGW and set up a process to get to the point where we are now. Usually, and we voted on many, many, many legislative bills here in this council, they have come before us, the convention center, the stadiums, the Marriott, pretty much everything that, that, that the administration wants. But the bill comes to us with the opportunity to discuss and to amend, okay? We don't have that luxury, and it's nice that you want to make changes, but the city solicitor has, says that you can't. I have a letter here dated April 11, 2014, and it says, "City council has the authority to authorize or decline to authorize an agreement negotiated by the parties. The parties could, in theory, agree to modest changes made, a condition of council's approval, though only to the limit extent permitted under competitive bidding law." So if we get into negotiating the contract, then you got to go back and the city has to go back to all those other people who bid it. So therefore, the, the, the problem that at least I have, and I think some of the other councilmembers share, is that we were given a leave or take it, a deal, with no ability to have a discussion to say, "Well, could you do this?" And you, and we agreed that would happen. But it says the, any changes will have to be made and agreed upon by the seller and the buyer. And so the seller is the mayor, not us, city. Doesn't include us, because we're not included in this. So that's what I want to make clear to you. That's why I have my problem with this process. I'm open to, and was open to, a discussion, although I don't, and never have been, for a private sale. I made it very clear when the mayor had his meetings that he talks about, but never was there a discussion of what we wanted to look at in terms of presenting at the city council. So you have to understand how we are concerned about this whole negotiation, and not only were we not include in the discussion or drafting, maybe not supposed to be involved in the drafting, but the discussion, but at least here we are with the limitations that legally from the city solicitor, we can't do.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for hanging in there, being there. Again, I want to make it clear on the record, for everybody listening, that the gentleman, and no one from UIL had asked previously to testify. I want to make sure that's clear, that we did not wait on them.
But we're always ready, so.
That being the case, this hearing on Resolution Number 140869 will stand in recess until tomorrow, Friday, November 14th, at 10:00 a.m., where we have a whole lot of other people listed to testify. Thank you.